Bienvenidos al Foro de candidatos del Distrito escolar de la Comunidad de Havreford, estamos muy contentos de que estéis aquí. Estamos muy emocionados de poder llevar este foro hoy. Mi nombre es Lisa Tagline, soy miembro de HCAN, que muchos de ustedes conocen, es el Network de Acción de la Comunidad de Havreford. También soy residente de Havreford Township y también soy madre de dos niños en las escuelas públicas de Havreford. HCAN está encantada de colaborar en este foro con la Leña de Voto de la Comunidad de Havreford. Ambas organizaciones son nonparticulares, así que estamos muy emocionados de poder llevar este foro y darle a los miembros de la comunidad, a ustedes y a todos sus vecinos, la oportunidad de ir a los votos el 16 de mayo como posible para ver las opiniones de los candidatos sobre los temas importantes para ustedes. El foro se dirigirá en consonancia con el formato de la Leña de Voto de la Comunidad de Havreford. Así que comenzaremos con una declaración introductoria de cada candidato. Y hemos pedido a los candidatos en su introducción que nos digan quiénes son y también que nos digan cuál es su visión para el futuro del Distrito escolar de Havreford y qué ven su rol como miembro del foro y lograr esa visión. Una vez que hemos hecho todas las declaraciones de abertura, preguntaremos a cada candidato preguntas que vienen de ustedes, el público. Así que hay tarjetas de índice en la mesa trasera. Si en algún momento le dan una pregunta que quieren hacer, por favor, saquen una tarjeta de índice, escribanlo. Yo voy circulando y recolectando tarjetas, así que díganme si tienen una pregunta y yo no la veo y yo saqué su tarjeta y trataré de hacer su pregunta. Las preguntas deben dirigirse a todos los seis candidatos. Los candidatos obtendrán la misma pregunta para cada pregunta que se hace. Y también pediremos que todas las preguntas se enfocen en temas o temas que afectan directamente nuestras escuelas. Esas son las preguntas que priorizaríamos cuando pasemos por las preguntas y decida qué preguntar. Si hay muchas preguntas, no podemos llegar a sus preguntas. Estamos en el horario de tiempo, pero vamos a hacer nuestro mejor para llegar a lo máximo de preguntas y vamos a hacer nuestro mejor para presentar una variedad de tipos de preguntas a los candidatos para que podamos obtener la mayor información posible. Después de responder preguntas, cada candidato tendrá la oportunidad de dar una declaración de cierre de un minuto. Planificamos terminar alrededor de 3:30. Si vamos un poco más tarde, no vamos a ir más tarde que 3:45, prometemos. Pedimos que todos en el público sean respetuosos con nuestro moderador y los candidatos y que se detengan de cualquier aplauso o comentarios verbales hasta después de que los candidatos hayan dado sus declaraciones de cierre al final del foro. Quiero recordar a todos que el día electoral es el martes 16 de mayo. No necesitan ID para ir a los votos a menos que no hayan votado antes o si han mudado a un nuevo precincto. Este foro está siendo filmado. Muchas gracias a Kathy de la Leña de Voto de la Comunidad de Havreford por filmar para nosotros. Se publicará en el sitio web de la Leña de Voto de la Comunidad y el sitio web de HCAN y vamos a tratar de hacerlo transmitir en el canal de la comunidad de Verizon y Comcast, pero todavía no estamos 100% seguros de que eso va a pasar, lo mantenemos informado. Me gustaría presentar a nuestro moderador, Roberta Winters. Sí, y por favor apaguen sus teléfonos para que no tengamos distracciones. Roberta Winters es nuestro moderador hoy. Roberta es la presidenta de la Leña de Voto de la Comunidad de Havreford de Radnor Township. Ella es una ex docente y es una moderadora muy experimentada, de la que estamos muy agradecidas. Y Roberta no vive en Havreford Township. Esa fue una decisión muy purposeful. Queríamos asegurarnos de que no hubiera ningún real o percibido bias en la moderación de este evento. Así que estamos muy contentos de que Roberta estuviera dispuesta a ayudarnos hoy. Así que voy a darlo a Roberta y empezaremos.
Muchas gracias. Es mi placer estar aquí hoy y bienvenid@s a la foro juntamente sponsorizado que tenemos para ustedes esta tarde. Pero me gustaría agradecer a los candidatos, primero de todos, por querer ser parte de este evento de tarde. Y me gustaría que comenzaran dando una declaración de abertura de dos minutos que incluya una breve introducción sobre ustedes mismos y también de cuál es su visión para nuestra escuela y cómo ven su rol dentro de eso. Y vamos a trabajar alfabeticamente hoy, así que empezaremos en la parte de atrás de la mesa. Vamos a subir. Cuando comencemos nuestras preguntas, el proceso comenzará con el segundo candidato y subiremos hasta que todo el mundo sea primero y todos sean últimos. Así que me gustaría comenzar dando declaraciones de abertura y ustedes también estarán muy bien posicionados al darles un signo de tiempo. Así que la Leña es muy buena en seguir las reglas, así que hay un límite de dos minutos. Hay un signo azul que dice que tiene 30 segundos y hay un signo de paro. Así que realmente nos gustaría que ustedes mantengan esos límites de tiempo. Y también, si hay una pregunta que se le pone y ustedes simplemente son incapaces, déjense pasar. ¿De acuerdo? Está bien pasar. A veces eso es lo mejor que hay que hacer. Esperamos que tengamos tiempo para al menos ocho preguntas y el timero en frente les ayudará a observar nuestros límites. También os pediremos que hagáis una declaración de cierre de un minuto. El moderador es yo y haré lo mejor que puedo. Así que primero de todos, comenzaré con el Sr. Balata y él va a dar nuestra primera declaración de abertura. Sr. Balata, gracias.
Creo que todos pueden escucharme. Buenas tardes, Russ Balata, residente de Havreford Township. Originalmente era de Havreford Township y volví a criar a mi familia básicamente debido a las escuelas. Y tengo tres hijos, niños adultos ahora que están en la carretera y que han sido muy, muy exitosos en el Distrito escolar de Havreford. Quería darle al Distrito escolar ese tipo de esfuerzo, que es por eso que recién empecé el foro en 1995. Y al tomar esa elección, usé mis 30 años ahora de educación superior en la carrera de tecnología de educación superior y pensé que esa experiencia sería útil para poder ayudar y ser un recurso para el Distrito escolar de Havreford Township. Antes de empezar en 1995 por primera vez, yendo a tener éxito, fui a participar en diez reuniones de el foro durante dos años y medio antes de llevarme a la escena y saber cómo opera el foro, qué hacen, cuál es su visión y cómo... Sí, solo para obtener una comprensión. Somos un foro de... Una gran parte de los no electos oficiales más el superintendente. La visión es mantener la calidad más alta de la educación para todos los estudiantes de manera más coste efectiva, también mantener los valores propios de Havreford Township. Los valores propios son extremadamente relacionados con la educación que se ofrece a los estudiantes de la ciudad. El foro opera en un macro nivel, planificación, establecimiento de políticas y evaluación de resultados con toda la información que se protege de la administración. He estado involucrado gravemente con el grupo de instalaciones del foro que pasó por algunos proyectos de construcción muy largos pero muy bien hechos a través del distrito. Espero servir otros cuatro años. Muchas gracias.
Gracias, Sr. Balata. Ahora es el turno de Sr. Gray.
Gracias, Russ. Quiero agradecer a todos por venir hoy. Quiero agradecer a HCAN y a la Leña de Voto de la Comunidad de Havreford por tenernos. También quiero agradecer a la gente por venir a nuestras reuniones de el foro en los últimos meses. Pasamos por años de tiempo y no recibimos mucha gente y realmente lo aprecio. Mi nombre es Dennis Gray. Prettyamente he vivido en Havreford Township toda mi vida. Mi esposa y yo tenemos cuatro hijos. Los criamos a través del Distrito escolar. Tenemos uno en la escuela secundaria ahora como estudiante. Tengo un hijo en la universidad, un freshman. Y una hija en la Universidad de Bucknell, que es una estudiante. Mi hijo mayor graduó hace un tiempo y trabaja en Vanguard, obteniendo un MBA en St. Joseph's y tiene un undergraduate en la Universidad de Penn State. Yo mismo, graduado de Havreford, fui al Linnwood. Tengo un doctorado en contabilidad, soy CPA. También soy abogado. He estado en el foro durante 21 años. Ahora he sido presidente durante mucho tiempo, más de lo que mi esposa probablemente realmente quiera que fuera. Mi visión para el Distrito escolar es muy simple. Es ser el mejor distrito escolar en esta área, no en Delaware County, en la área. Y creo que lo somos. Creo que somos mejores que Will and Marion, que vamos a ser. Hacemos muchas cosas buenas en Havreford. Y la forma de hacer eso es apoyar a la administración. El trabajo de los miembros del foro no es controlarlo en ningún sentido. Y creo que lo hemos hecho durante muchos, muchos años. Una vez, como abogado, representaba distritos escolares y colegios de comunidad y me dijeron años atrás, los miembros del foro deberían hacer dos preguntas. ¿Te recomiendan y podemos pagar? Y siempre mantengo eso en mente en todos los momentos. Mi objetivo es continuar con los test de alta calidad, mejorarlos, pero necesitamos trabajar en el medio. Los niños en el medio necesitamos trabajar en ellos. Necesitamos asegurarnos de que obtengan una educación de calidad. Creo que lo estamos haciendo, pero podemos hacer un trabajo mejor. Como padre con un niño que ha salido, con los niños que tienen IEPs, sé lo que la gente pasa por en este distrito escolar. Y creo que estamos haciendo un gran trabajo. Siempre podemos mejorar. La forma de mejorar es contratar administradores de calidad y lo hemos hecho. Gracias.
Gracias, Sr. Gray. Ahora, Sr. Hopkins.
Buenas tardes. Ciertamente es un placer hablar con todos y también estar aquí con Dennis y Russ, quienes son colegas. Soy Phil Hopkins. Soy el miembro senior del foro. Estoy terminando mi sexto mandato, solicitando un séptimo. Primero en el foro en 1985. Durante la mayoría de ese tiempo, también fui el representante del distrito a través de la unidad intermediaria. Como Russ ha sabido, es una obligación muy compleja y te involucra no solo en la educación especial, en la carrera, en la educación técnica y en el head start. Así que proporciona un complemento a lo que hacemos como foro. En mi profesión, soy economista. Tengo más de 35 años de experiencia en hacer todo tipo de estudios económicos y impuestos en todo el país, realmente en todo el mundo. Así que lo que permite que me abraza el foro es realmente lo siguiente. Soy un resolvento de problemas. Trabajo para una empresa de comercio público. Tengo que analizar datos, hacer inferencias, hacer recomendaciones y tratar de entender qué está pasando. Tengo mucha experiencia cuantitativa. Aquellos de ustedes que ven las reuniones de el foro saben que el broma interna es, ¿dónde está mi spreadsheet? Pero esa es la contribución que hago a mi análisis. Mi trabajo es multidisciplinario. Trabajo en economía, política, derecho y demás. Así que tengo que sacar sentido de muchos tipos de información, lo cual es exactamente lo que debe hacer un miembro del foro. Mi背景告诉我应该做的，作为 board member, es ir donde la investigación te lleva, lo que la información te dice y luego escuchar la expertise de los expertos. Mi visión educativa para Havreford es muy simple. Si miras lo que hemos logrado, y creo que ha sido considerable durante los últimos 25 años, y yo primero fui al foro en 1985, siempre hemos sido el mejor en la educación. Estudios repetidos han demostrado que obtenemos un nivel de logro muy alto para una explotación muy moderada. Eso es lo que me gustaría obtener. Finalmente, diría a todos ustedes que son relativamente nuevos y sabemos la mayoría de vuestras caras cuando vienen a ser un miembro del foro. Consideren nuestra experiencia y también cómo llevamos a cabo las responsabilidades del foro. Gracias.
Siguiente, la señora Larson.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Kristen Larson. Soy la patrona de un futuro estudiante de Chestnut Wald. También soy maestra, líder escolar y investigadora de educación. Como maestra, he dedicado mi carrera a apoyar a los estudiantes y familias, colaborar con los profesionales escolares y miembros de la comunidad y a reflexionar y mejorar mi propia práctica de enseñanza. actualmente enseño ESL y sirvo como coordinadora del departamento ESL en la Escuela de Cultura y Tesoro de Artes de la Foz de la Cultura de Chinatown. Aunque no soy una concejal de escuelas de charter, la Fát es una escuela única con una misión única, haciendo trabajo importante para estudiantes de Asia y América del Norte en la ciudad de Filadelfia. Tengo un máster en educación multicultural y multilingüe y soy candidata doctoral en la Universidad de Pennsylvania, Escuela de Educación de Doctorado. También he presentado mi investigación doctoral nacional e internacionalmente. Estoy preparando para el foro escolar de Havreford porque creo en el poder de la educación pública para nutrir a nuestros niños en el presente para que se vuelvan estudiantes de vida y ciudadanos en el futuro. Mi visión para la continuidad de la excelencia en nuestro distrito incluye un énfasis en la acercamiento de la infancia entera que apoya los estudiantes académicos, sociales, emocionales, creativos y físicamente desarrollados. Creo que nuestros niños son mucho más que solo test de calificación estándar. Mi visión también incluye la promoción de una mayor diversidad y inclusión en la fabricación académica y social de nuestras escuelas. También una parte de mi visión es una mayor participación de la comunidad en las discusiones y procesos de toma de decisiones que impactan a nuestros estudiantes y a nuestras escuelas. Es bien conocido que el Distrito escolar de Havreford tiene una fuerte reputación y un marco para el éxito en place. Si electo a nuestro foro como padre y como miembro de esta comunidad, estoy completamente invertido en ver ese éxito continuar. Gracias.
Gracias, señora Larson. Señora Ninji.
Gracias. Gracias por salir hoy a esta hermosa tarde de domingo. Mi nombre es Susan Ninji y mi deseo de convertirme en director de foro escolar del Distrito escolar de Havreford Township proviene de mis 35 años de experiencia trabajando en nuestro distrito. También crié a cuatro hermosos niños. De hecho, me mudé a nuestro township hace 30 años para poder enviar a mis dos hijos más jóvenes a las escuelas de Havreford Township. Soy una niña embarazada y crecí en Drexel Hill. Pero empecé mi carrera en Cooper Town como una de las primeras maestras de seminarios. Fui una de las primeras en el programa de "Give to Program" que realmente ayudó a escribir el programa. Durante 15 años, trabajé con estudiantes de los niveles de educación, gracias a Carol Restepo, para motivarlos, enriquecerlos y encorajar su desarrollo. Mi primera posición administrativa en el Distrito escolar fue como supervisor de educación especial. Trabajé con maestros y familias para asegurar que todos nuestros niños de necesidades especiales tuvieron el mejor programa que tenían que ofrecer. Mi último trabajo fue como principal de la escuela de Linnwood. Durante 12 años, trabajé muy duro para enriquecer a nuestros estudiantes y a sus familias en un ambiente seguro con propósito y apoyo. Tengo un doctorado en Westchester University, antes era la universidad. Y un máster en Widenary University. Mis certificados supervisores y principales provienen de St. Joseph's. Ha enseñado a estudiantes de undergraduate en Temple en cursos de educación especial y he enseñado educación diferenciada en Cabrini College. Creo que la comunidad escolar y la comunidad de Havreford en general han llegado a confiar en los miembros del foro como un grupo de ciudadanos dedicados, responsables e involucrados. Nuestros vecinos de Havreford entienden, apoyan y preocupan profundamente por nuestras escuelas. Mi trabajo, ¡pará! No importa cuál sea mi título, siempre ha sido y siempre será hacer que la gente trabaje juntos. Gracias.
Gracias. Ahora es el Sr. Sinta.
Hola. Mi nombre es Sal Sinta. Me gustaría tomar la oportunidad de primero agradecer a todos aquí, HCAN, la Leña de Voto de la Comunidad de Havreford por sponsoring esto. Es una maravillosa oportunidad. Y es una gran oportunidad de estar entre tales candidatos cualificados. Es un honor. Actualmente trabajo en el Distrito escolar de Havreford Township como maestro instrumental de los niveles de educación, enseñando música a los estudiantes de los niveles de educación. También trabajo en la escuela secundaria allí. Mi esposa también es maestra de los niveles de educación en Havreford Township. Soy el padre de dos niños en la escuela de Linnwood, 10 y 6 años, y tengo un hijo de cuatro años que estará atendiendo pronto. Mi... La razón por la que empece este viaje y pongo mi nombre en la cabeza para ser un miembro del foro es que siento que los educadores realmente necesitan tener una voz en la formación de la política escolar. Creo que especialmente en este momento cuando las cosas cambian rápidamente y son siempre cambiando, esa voz del educador en hablar sobre el impacto de las decisiones escolares y políticas que afectan a todas nuestras escuelas es extremadamente importante. Estamos enfrentados a continuos desafíos y estarán enfrentados a desafíos y decisiones difíciles sobre qué programas y la forma en que la educación afecta a nuestros estudiantes. Creo que la educación debe siempre centrarse en los estudiantes, que deberíamos trabajar muy duro para mejorar la educación para todos los estudiantes y asegurarnos de que tengamos el apoyo continuo de los administradores y los maestros. Son el mayor recurso para nuestros estudiantes. Y creo que es extremadamente importante para nosotros y para los miembros del foro asegurarnos de que eso es nuestra prioridad. Gracias por la oportunidad de estar aquí y espero servir a la comunidad. Gracias.
Gracias a todos por sus declaraciones de abertura. Ahora voy a empezar con el Sr. Gray para hacer la primera pregunta. Cada uno de ustedes responderá en turna activamente respecto a este tema. ¿Qué ideas tienen para asegurar que el currículo y la política escolar trabajen para proporcionar un ambiente de aprendizaje seguro para los estudiantes que son miembros de grupos marginalizados debido a las diferencias de raza, género, orientación sexual o religión?
El foro... Primero de todos, es mi posición, siempre es mi posición, el trabajo de los miembros del foro es asegurarnos de que cada niño esté seguro y feliz en la escuela. Y esforzamos...
Perdón, creo que necesitamos el micrófono, lo apagamos o lo acerca.
¿Eso es mejor? ¿Puedo hablar? Nunca he sido acusado de no ser alto. Como miembro del foro, mi obligación es asegurarme de que cada niño esté seguro y feliz en la escuela. El foro tiene políticas sobre el harassment, tienen políticas sobre el bullying, tienen políticas sobre el harassment sexual en relación con los estudiantes. Esas políticas son todas inclusivas de todos. No diferenciamos en ningún modo. Como miembro del foro, trabajé duro hace 20 años para asegurar que los estudiantes que se sentían marginalizados, ya sea basado en la raza o basado en la orientación sexual, se sintieran cómodos en nuestras escuelas. Creo que hemos liderado en eso durante los últimos 20 años. Cosas simples como ir a la prom sin una fecha y ir a la prom con la misma sexo, no importa. Eso ha estado pasando durante años en Havreford, como debería haber sido en todos los momentos. Nuestras políticas son fuertes en esto. Sin embargo, sé que la gente en la comunidad tiene preocupaciones y acabo de involucrar un nuevo comité formado de administradores para trabajar con consultores, para mejorar nuestras políticas, para asegurarnos de que todos se sientan incluidos.
Permítame agregar a lo que Dennis señaló. Primero de todos, es algo que hemos estado haciendo durante mucho tiempo y no quiero entrar en una discusión semántica sobre qué tipos de identidades hay en nuestras políticas. De hecho, fuimos algunos de los primeros, tal vez el primer distrito de la región, a hacer algunos de los siguientes. Teníamos un programa de justicia restaurativo que lo utilizamos muy efectivamente en las escuelas secundarias para asegurar que cuando hay un problema entre los estudiantes, que puedan resolverlo de una manera que no es injusta. Fuimos uno de los primeros en la región a hacer las líneas gay y straight. Probablemente hace 25 años. Muchos años atrás, algunos de ustedes que han estado por ahí recuerdan una palabra muy horrible que se puso en la habitación de la escuela secundaria y de hecho, la forma en que lidiamos con ella y fuimos reconocidos por la ACLU y algunos otros por la forma sensible en que la abordamos. Ahora que dicho esto, el tema transgénero presenta algunos desafíos únicos y Dennis ha notado que estamos trabajando con eso. Pero si miras nuestras políticas, es claro que aplican a todos los estudiantes. Siempre lo han hecho y siempre lo van a hacer. En la medida en que necesitamos aprender, ser informados y cambiar nuestras políticas para adaptarnos a una situación muy diferente, estamos ciertamente dispuestos a hacer eso.
Así que un gran trozo de currículo. Muchas veces el currículo es un espejo que pondría valor en la sociedad y si nuestros estudiantes no se ven reflejados en el currículo, entonces necesitamos retroceder y reevaluar. A menudo se nota en libros de texto de historia, por ejemplo, que se ven mujeres en los bordes, se ven personas de color en los bordes. También hay todo tipo de historias de personas de color marginalizadas que son invisibles. No están allí. Y es tan importante para nosotros como maestros, como distrito escolar, reconocer esas historias, reconocer que tenemos estudiantes de color en este distrito, estudiantes que pueden ser gender nonconformes, estudiantes de antecedentes no dominantes que necesitan verse en el currículo. Y una forma de hacer eso es construir comunidad en la escuela, construir comunidad a través de los educadores. Esto no es algo que podemos simplemente bajar en una escuela y decir, hey, corra con esto. Necesitamos proporcionar entrenamiento, necesitamos proporcionar deportes. También necesitamos que los maestros y líderes del distrito sean reflectivos. Necesitamos sentarse y pensar, ¿cuáles son mis biases? ¿Qué traigo a la mesa? ¿Cuál es mi privilegio en esta situación? ¿Cuáles son mis preguntas? El trabajo de abordar las historias, las historias, el posicionamiento de las personas no dominantes en nuestro currículo es un trabajo sucio y eso requiere compromiso y requiere apoyo. Y lo bueno es que tenemos tantos recursos ahora. Hay mucho currículo ahí fuera. Tenemos el trabajo de Harvard Sin, Linda Christensen, enseñando por Joy of Justice, enseñando por Tolerance desde el Centro de Derecho de la Pobreza Sur. Tienen montones de recursos ahí fuera, solo para nombrar algunos. Así que creo que si estamos dispuestos a hacer esas cosas, los apoyos pueden estar en juego y podemos hacer que nuestro distrito sea más bien recibido y inclusivo para nuestros estudiantes. Gracias.
Gracias. Como miembro del foro, espero trabajar con el Dr. Ruchi para asegurarnos de que proporcionemos recursos y apoyo para asegurar la igualdad y el acceso a todos los estudiantes. Como antigua directora, les diré que he visto que eso ocurre en nuestras escuelas. Uno de los programas que tenemos en las escuelas de los niveles de educación que ha hecho milagros para nuestros estudiantes en cuanto a aceptación y comprensión se llama课堂 responsive. El distrito ha puesto mucho dinero en el entrenamiento de nuestros maestros que luego gastan todos los días en una reunión. Lo llamamos reuniones de mañana. A veces lo hacen después del almuerzo, dependiendo de su tiempo. Pero es una oportunidad donde todos los estudiantes en un classroom se conocen un poco, se entienden un poco y se vuelven amigos cuando quizás ni siquiera hablaban entre sí. Así que课堂 responsive es una de las formas de trabajo del currículo. Voy a repetir, pero espero trabajar con el Dr. Ruchi y asegurarnos de que tenemos todos los recursos para los administradores porque creo que los directores son donde comienza. Los directores lo filtran en reuniones de facultad, hablando con sus maestros y luego va a los niños. Gracias.
Estos son todos temas, creo, que todo el mundo está pasionado por. Ya sea de un lado o de otro lado, o en el medio. Cuando estamos enfrentados a estos temas pasionados y posturas y cosas que afectan a nuestros niños, creo que uno de los roles que el foro puede asegurar es que los procesos necesarios estén en place para que eso suceda. Todo el mundo está tan pasionado que dice, quiero esto y quiero que ocurra ahora de una manera u otra. Y creo que una de las cosas que debemos aplaudir es que esos procesos están en place. En la forma en que esos procesos suceden, ¿son transparentes? ¿Involucran a los interesados en la educación? ¿Hay jugadores involucrados, otros miembros de la comunidad, maestros, estudiantes? Esas cosas, creo, son tan importantes como el proceso en sí. Así que cuando miramos estos temas, es cómo podemos poner una política en place que permita que los maestros aseguren que puedan tomar decisiones a su nivel, permita que la administración asegure y define claramente lo que queremos asegurar en la escuela. No discriminación no es bullying, bullying no es harassment. ¿Cómo podemos asegurar que los estudiantes mismos puedan identificarse con el lenguaje necesario en place en la política para asegurarnos de que se sientan como si tuvieran una voz dentro del currículo, ayudando a avanzar dentro del currículo? ¿Tienen esa voz en todos los niveles de educación, desde los niveles de los niveles de educación hasta la escuela secundaria? Gracias.
Desafortunadamente, a veces cuando la persona que pregunta se acerca a una pregunta es difícil agregar nueva información. No puedo discordar con nada que se pueda decir. Concordo con mis tres incumbentes en el foro. La única cosa que diré es que el Distrito escolar de Havreford Township, cuando creamos políticas, se presentan a nosotros desde la administración que ha hecho una cantidad exorbitante de investigación en todo el estado, en todo el país, contactando con otros distritos que han ido por el mismo camino. Y esas políticas son leídas a través de tres reuniones. Y el foro se involucra en ocasiones en conversaciones extremadamente largas y revelando en particular palabras específicas y cómo esa palabra debería o no cambiar. Después de que esas tres reuniones se terminen y lo votamos, así es como la política está en place. No solo entramos y decimos, aquí está, está hecho. En realidad, lo revisamos y lo estudiamos. Y la administración es muy buena en comunicar todo sobre eso y lo que han escuchado de los edificios hasta nosotros. Gracias.
Estamos ahora listos para nuestra segunda pregunta. Y la persona que responderá primero es el Sr. Hopkins. Además de ser un requisito estatal, ¿cuál cree que es el valor de las pruebas estatales como las PSSAs? Y más aún, ¿cuánto tiempo cree que se debería pasar en el classroom preparando para estos tests?
Este es un... ¿Escuchas? Tienes dos minutos. ¿Qué tal ahora? Hemos tenido mucho debate sobre esto y he sido bastante desplomado. Creo que hay un rol para las evaluaciones estatales y es realmente bastante simple. El Commonwealth gasta unos 5 mil millones de dólares en la educación pública a todos los distritos en el estado. Necesitamos algún tipo de punto de referencia en cómo nuestros estudiantes están performiendo comparado con Radnor, Will and Marion y todos los distritos. Y las evaluaciones estatales nos proporcionan eso. Y puedo decirles que cuando hemos tenido situaciones donde las notas de Chestnut Wald bajaron un año por 25 puntos... year by 25 points in math, we started getting calls. So those scores, people look at them, they react to them, and they have a place. Now, the question then becomes, how much time do you devote to those tests? And if you're not preparing for those tests, what are you not doing? While you're preparing for those tests, what are you not doing in the meantime? So there is an appropriate role. I think what's happened in Pennsylvania is that we've realized that we've probably been spending too much time on those tests, but they do provide the necessary accountability for us as board members to be able to say to all of you, here's what your money is given. To be a little more specific, I oppose the opt outs. I think that's harmful to the district. I don't think that students should opt out of those tests, because we need a measuring point. The question is finding the appropriate balance. The last thing I would say is that we have a balance of assessment methods that we use. So it's not only the standardized tests that we use to measure how our students are compared to their peers in those districts, but how we use them during the day for instructional purposes.
I'd just like to start out by saying, standardized tests, our children are not standardized people. Each child is different, each child is an individual, and if we're truly taking a holistic approach, we need to be considering alternate ways of assessing what our students know and what they can do. In terms of the role of testing, it is important to have a benchmark, it is important to have a pulse on our students, I'm just not sure PSSAs are the way to do that. However, given our current political climate, we are beholden to the PSSA as the test that we're required to administer. The amount of time that the test takes up is absurd. I recently, I have been administering a test to my students, four days for the ELA test, three days for math, and two days for science. And we're starting with third graders, and to just see the look of panic and anxiety on some of those children's faces is just unjust. It's absolutely unjust. In terms of how much time we should take up in the classroom, if the test is truly PA Core aligned and we are teaching a PA Core curriculum in our classroom, we should not need to take up that much time preparing for the test. That said, our children need to know test-taking strategies. In day-to-day classroom work and formative assessments, we're not administering multiple-choice questions all the time, and there are different strategies that students need to know how to employ to do that. So I do think that test-taking strategies, as we near the testing period, do need to be something that students are taught. But again, I think it's very important to look into alternative means of assessing what our students can do.
Am I on? I agree with Kristin that we all need to learn how to take test-taking strategies. We've all taken the SATs, et cetera, et cetera. However, I think that it's important to know and understand, we all need to be accountable, but these tests have now been tied, and I'm not sure everyone knows, to teacher evaluation. So we're not just testing students, we are also testing teachers. And that becomes, I believe, one of the main problems with the time we are practicing how to take the test, because teachers want to make sure that their students are doing the best they can for themselves and for the school, because the school gets a number. In Havertford Township, we are really very good at looking at the difference between growth and mastery. Not everybody in the United States understands that, but we do here in Havertford. And our curriculum is wonderful at knowing where the kids are, we know what they've mastered, and we know how far they've grown for us in that year. So I commend all of us in Havertford Township in the curriculums that we've chosen. We know, each teacher knows how their kids are doing, but when it comes to that PSSA, it's a whole nother deep breath that everyone in the school, not just the children, have to take.
So I think that the large majority of choices that are made in education now are data-driven. Data is here, it's a part of what we do. There's data in terms of testing. The materials that we choose for students are data-driven. The instruction, the choices that we make are data-driven. A student-centered approach means that you're looking at data to see how to best serve the needs of every student. So data is here. The problem is, is that, at least for me and the teachers that I know, we look at every student as an individual and as an individual student. We don't look at, we look at data to help us drive instruction, but we see a child. We see children who need a certain element of teaching, or we look at that student and say, this is the way that I think is best, and our school says is best, is best for that child. So the question for people at the district level on the school board is, how do you interpret that data? And that's the problem, because the data changes. The science PSSA test has changed over the course of the last three years. So can you even compare the data from this year to the last year? We've gone from AYP to evaluate schools, to the student performance, or the school performance profile now, and who knows what's next, right? So on the school boards, having that voice of someone who's in education and as an educator, I think it's extremely important to help you determine what that data means from those tests and help to move forward to ensure that every student has the services that they need.
State-tier requirement for testing. There are needs for it. Unfortunately, I'm going to look at it in a couple of different approaches. One being, the amount of money the state of Pennsylvania has allotted for the companies that create the tests, follow the money tree for those companies. $250 million last year for state creation of testing. However, the results of those tests, the data that we analyze, gives Havertford the ability to say, we are 37th district in the state of Pennsylvania. We have 42% AP classes within our high school. Nationally, we have a silver medal, being 1,424 in school ratings across the country. Being an educator is one thing. I am a data-driven person, I'm in technology. Just because I'm an educator does not know, does not mean I don't understand what is going on with the data, with the students in the class. I don't have to be there every day. That's not my job. My job is to take the information from the administration that we have built and trust to present us with clear and concise information and work forward from that point.
Thank you, Russ. I've been around long enough to remember when we used to brag that we didn't teach to the test, and sometimes I wonder, are we bragging that we are teaching to the test? Which is very upsetting to me. I am not, I'm not against nationalized tests that measure what we're doing in our schools. I think that's important. I'm against how this is set up, I'm against the amount of money that goes into it from the state, and I think what happens during the day of PSSAs and keystones is, to some degree, a waste of time. It should not, the state requires us to spend way too much time just in taking the test, folks. Forget about what we're teaching to. What we need to make sure is our curriculum is aligned to the standards, and if we do that, we can have the enriched curriculum that we currently have. There's other ways to measure a child and success of a school that doesn't come into play with standardized testing. Our athletic department, our arts department, our music department, that gets lost in here. It's what we lose when we talk about a child. To me, the greatest accomplishment or the greatest compliment you can give someone is call them an ever-achiever, okay? And that's what we're not measuring here. We don't measure what our former superintendent used to call "great," kids who want to work really hard to move ahead. And standardized testing can't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. We're ready for our next question, and Ms. Larson, this is going to be for you first. Based on recent research about teen sleep needs, some local districts have and are even considering a later school start time, in some they are even looking at flipping elementary and high school. Would you advocate for changing start times? If so, why or why not?
So I'll start by taking a step back and considering, yes, I'm aware of the research. I'm aware that, you know, the science is behind students, especially high school students needing more time to sleep, we're waking them up in the middle of their sleep cycles to come to high school in the mornings. And I respect and acknowledge that. I think for me, alone to make that decision is inappropriate, it would need to come from the community, then it could absolutely be a discussion, but I think there's a huge logistical piece that needs to be considered here. And part of being on the school board is balancing budget, logistics, and community wants and needs. I mean, I can only imagine, just trying to upend the schedule tomorrow or the beginning of next school year could have catastrophic consequences if not done thoughtfully or piloted in a way that just really tries to account for, you know, what could happen. And just thinking, you know, parents' work schedules are impacted after school programs, school sports, even the teams that we're playing across, you know, in other districts. So would this be something that would need to take place on the IU level? So again, I would be happy to read the research, if there's community backing behind this to, you know, to look more into it, but I do think it's easier said than done.
I completely agree with Kristin. I believe it's something that the community needs to discuss, and the research I've read, and I've also raised four of them, and I can tell you that no matter when you give them a bedtime, when you ask them and tell them that they have to get up early, when you tell them all of the things they can have, and they still go upstairs, TV, the new phone, social media, whatever they're doing, you're doing it, and there's nothing we can do about it, because I also have to get up early. So I completely agree with Kristin. I think this is an issue that all of us in Havertford need to talk about. One of the things I worry about are the small ones. I worry about with daylight savings time, what time are they having to go to school? What time are they having to come home? In the dark, in the light? Those kinds of things, and the safety of all of the kids in Havertford is something that I think needs to be a part of that discussion.
I can definitely understand what you're talking about, if your kid's asleep. It's a hard question, it really is. I don't think I have an answer for it. I think it's something that if the community feels it's important to discuss, then it's important. But I do agree with the idea that the safety of our children has to be a part of this as well. We also have to look at the schedules, as has been said, to see whether or not sports and other activities after school are going to be affected. It's a really difficult decision. I know that as people, we sometimes are resistant to change, and so if it's something that is coming from the community, then it should be looked at, but it's a difficult one. Logistically, it's a difficult piece to the puzzle, but one that probably should be looked at together. So, thank you.
Again, being on the later end of the question answering piece, it's hard to not agree with a lot that has been said, that is true and correct. The start time change is a huge logistical nightmare, as it sits right now. Other schools have done it, they don't know all of the procedures that they have done behind it. I can just speak for, in the higher ed environment, we had the opposite occurring. Our students wanted later starts. Eight o'clock classrooms were empty. Well, our, we had a new VP of Academic Affairs committee, and he says, what are we teaching them? They need to start their workday at eight o'clock in the morning, usually, or even early. So all the junior and senior level classes were moved to start at eight o'clock in the morning. That didn't go over well, but we were just a unique school. We didn't have other variables to be concerned with. The research does have to be analyzed carefully, and again, it's not something that you can do overnight, you'll just slap it in, start June 1st, we'll start analyzing it come September, when we start classes after Labor Day, that we're going to run with it. There's just too many variables, and I believe others are going to mention some of those variables.
My son's a sophomore at the high school. He gets up at 6:25, so he can catch the bus, it's part of our house, at 6:30. He's one of the very first in the high school, because he's the first kid picked up at the bus and quite frankly, the last kid dropped off. I understand the situation completely. When your children are young, as a parent, when your children are younger, they're up earlier, and when they get older, they don't get up as early. I personally kind of think that if we told him to start at 10, I don't know if he'd still get up at 9:25, he'd have the 9:30 bus, quite honestly. It's a problem, but logistically, it's going to be almost impossible. I've been the school representative for the five county schools of the PIWA for the last six years. One of what drives high schools, folks, is that we all start athletics and music and art and activities right before high school ends, and it goes to about 10 o'clock at our schools. And it's what we can do, I think, without changing the schedule, what we should be doing is working on ending some school activities a little earlier. So when the boys' cross team is practicing from 7:00 to 10:00 at night, that's a problem, folks, and we need to look at that. And I think it's a tough solution to have, but I'm not certain we can do it on our own, because of athletics and activities, we're tied to the rest of the schools in the area.
I'm going to give a process answer, and we're aware of this issue. I think Kate and others have brought it to our attention, and I've read the research, and some of the others have. But how would we go about it? The same way that we've dealt with other issues such as decay, class size, and so forth. And what we've done for those issues is to assign to the administrators, put a committee together, find out, as I said in my opening remarks, what does the evidence say? What's the research consensus about the effect of the, when you get up, and the length of the day, and so forth, costs and benefits? One thing that people have to realize is that we bus students to 140 different schools every day outside Havertford Township. So the linkage effects of changing starting times are simply enormous, and whether we can align it, all that, I don't know. But the way I would go about it would be to look at the evidence, consider the costs and the benefits, and then make an informed decision. The other thing I would also indicate is that the researchers said that related to this particular issue of when they get to school is the whole issue of homework, and that's part and parcel of the problem. So I think you'd have to look at that issue along with the start time. Finally, there may be some collective bargaining issues also involved about your ability to change start time and so forth. So, complex issue, no easy answers, but we would go about it the same way that we always have for these kinds of issues.
Thank you. Our next question begins with Ms. Ningi. What do you think should be the balance between offering vocational technical preparation and college preparation at the high school level?
Thank you for that question. I'm a strong believer in vocational education. I'm a strong believer in the whole child, in that children should have an opportunity to experience most things in high school, so that we can help them make informed decisions. I will talk about my son, who made a beautiful clock for us in the shop department. Wasn't vocational training, it was an elective, but it was a wonderful opportunity for him to understand what it would be like to work with his hands, if indeed then he wanted to go into that kind of work he had the experience. I believe very strongly that our children should get to experience all of it. They should be able to see what it's like to fix a wire, they should be able to see what it's like to do all the things that perhaps they might want to do as a career. I don't know how many of us have all had children that entered college, came home one weekend and said, I'm not sure. But the opportunity for our children to work on the vocational end as well as the academic end, get to experience both, and stop and think about, wow, I'm good at this, or wow, I'm not very good at this, is something that I would like to see every one of our students have the chance to experience. Thank you.
As a musician, I absolutely feel that, as has been said, that students should have the opportunity to experience as much as they can in all aspects of learning. I think it's extremely important for them to have that experience. Myself, I am definitely an advocate to have that type of experience at every level of education. It's difficult when, I'm sure, when you look at your resources to say, can you make a decision for this or that? You have a finite level of resources that you can apply. And so these decisions are extremely important and ones that you as parents and community members entrust to the school board. It's a great responsibility and one that I think can't be taken lightly. The question of either or, it's a difficult one to say. How can you say that you need to have college preparation as well? You can't say that we're just going to sacrifice preparation for college in an effort to make sure that there's vocational experience as well. That balance needs to be looked at with data, it needs to be looked at through the process, and I think that having the right people in a position to make those decisions is important to making sure that the students get those activities and to experience it at that level.
This is back in 2016, when Mr. Hopkins, like, oh, we can have a step down from the IU board for a variety of reasons, I was asked to fill in that position, and I personally have found that to be such an enlightening experience right now, working with the IU. I had 15 on the school district, 14 on the school district, in the district, the county, on the VOTAC, in particular. I personally go back many, many years, I had a, one of my stepson's best friends was in the VOTAC, at the Annapolis Park, he was in the URA. was in the URAD telling, and they needed a car volunteer to be painted. Well, my car happened to need to be painted, sorry. And I went down, I had to buy, I bought the paint for them, and they took the car for a day and a half, and they repainted that car. And I'm going to tell you, for just paying for the paint, I got one heck of a job done. And I had a little problem, they didn't put the windshield coping back incorrectly, I started to leak. They took care of it right away. Everybody needs a plumber, everybody needs an electrician. Now, I work in higher ed, so I might, I usually take it for this one. But is college for everybody? Not necessarily, however, with the way society has moved today, you need certificates for things. The VOTEC offers those certificates. Quick story, Newman was just putting up a new building last year. It was a center block building, of course, that's early school institution construction. They could not find what's called a corner man for the center block wall. That corner man is the person who puts the wall, the building, in wash. They had to go to the union and get retired men to do that. So, do we need VOTEC? Yes.
Thank you, Russ. We provide VOTEC through the IU and they do a wonderful job. I think part of the problem and concerns that I would have as a parent, and I've discussed this with one or two of my children, is the fact that you're pretty much taken out of Havreford for most of the day, and I think that's what scares students off from VOTEC. The program itself is phenomenal, what they offer. As an attorney, and my business is to represent, I represent small businesses, and to run your own business, not only do you need a skill set in your trade, but you also need to understand accounting, have a fundamental understanding of the legal issues. And that's where the school comes in. We need to have children educated to understand math, to understand science, to be good communicators, and that's where we come in. We're not here to train people necessarily, that's for colleges and the trade schools. My daughter, we need more programs, quite frankly, like medical careers, and I'm not certain everybody understands what that is or is familiar with. Medical careers is we take students very early in the morning, it kind of goes against the last question, and we transfer them to, and they go to class at the local hospitals, and they do RANS. And it was a phenomenal experience for my daughter because she learned something extremely important. She wanted to be a doctor. Then she spent a whole year in a hospital, came back to me and said, "I don't think I want to be a doctor anymore." And that is a great experience, but what she learned there through the VOTEC is phenomenal, and I think we need more programs like that.
Well, as I said in my introductory remarks, I spent 20 years working on this issue on the IU Board, because the IU Board is also the Board for the two career technical education schools. And those 20 years spanned 1985 to last year, so we saw a lot of changes in society. So a couple of points that I would make. First of all, not everybody wants to go to college, not everybody should go to college. And I think one of the benefits, if you will, of the Great Recession has been in fact that we realized that that's probably not an appropriate thing to happen. For about 10 years, I was Director of Research for an organization in Philadelphia that attracted businesses, and the question we would always get is skilled labor. Well, they're not always looking for somebody with a BA or an engineer. They want people who can run very sophisticated manufacturing equipment, who can measure, who can communicate, who can be well-rounded, and it doesn't necessarily involve a BA, and the key role there often played by the community colleges. On the IU Board, we had a series of employer advisory groups, and we were constantly asking them, "What kinds of workers do you need, and what kind of competency do you need?" Not so much education, but there are specific things in the workforce that you need them to be able to do. Finally, I would say that we've gotten past, but we're still not past, the issue of special ed dumping. And there were a lot of people who would say that VOTEC was simply a place where special ed students were sent and they were dumped. And you know yourself, if you go into your guidance council of the high school and say, "Well, I'd really like to go VOTEC," sometimes you can be actively dissuaded from doing that, when in fact, that's the best thing for you.
So I'll just reiterate what others have said, college is not for everyone, and we've been spoon-fed, I don't know if it started with my generation or a few years earlier, that you need to go to college or you will be a failure in life. And it was so hard for me growing up, getting honors and AP classes in my own high school because I come from a working class background. My father has his own small business, and he's been quite successful, but he never went to college. So that never really made sense for me. I do think we need to normalize and have more respect for vocational schooling, because as others have said, we need plumbers, we need electricians, we need people working on our cars, mechanics. I sure as heck don't have those skills. This also makes me think of the German school system, where they have a track system starting in fourth grade. In fourth grade, you can either choose, and again, I think fourth grade's too young, to go the vocational track, which is fully respectable. You can go the professional track, where you learn a profession, or you can go to gymnasium, which sets you up to go to college. And as I said, it's fully normalized there, you can choose the track that you take. As Dennis mentioned, if you are in the VOTEC track, and do you need the skills that others need if they're preparing for college? Of course, you need math skills, you need accounting skills, you need to know how to set up a website, marketing skills, things that you can do to help run your business. So I do think there's overlap in general academic skills, but I think we need to expand what our definitions are of academic to include vocational education.
Thank you. Our next question begins with Mr. Sinto. If the budget was so tight that you had to either scale back funding for athletics or for fine and performing arts such as music and art in any given school, which would you choose to scale back?
Thanks for that. I can tell you from my experience that I have wonderful experiences in both, and I've seen wonderful experiences in both. Personally, I had an extraordinary experience as someone who flourished in the arts. I think it's extremely important for students. I think that sports is extremely important for students. I would hate to be in that situation where you had to choose one or the other. I can't give an answer to that. I wish I could. I don't know. And I don't think you can say one or the other unless you're placed in that position with the information in front of you, with input from the community, with data in front of you, and quite frankly, information from the community that you're speaking with. The question right now is asked, "Can you make that choice? Which one are you going to choose?" I don't know, because I'm not faced with the particular, specific information to say how I would go one way or another. I can say, however, that I'm not in a position to say one is more important than the other. They both help students and young people to find themselves and have a voice, and I think that it's important to make sure that we encourage that.
I can guarantee you from past experiences, if that has come to our attention, we would have an auditorium pact with athletic parents, or we would have an auditorium pact with arts-supporting parents. That being said, I'm a strong supporter of arts. Does that mean I'm voting arts over athletics? Absolutely not. Mr. Sinto is correct. Right now, sitting here, I cannot make that decision. I could not tell you honestly what I would do. Again, what am I relying on? I'm going to rely on the input that comes from our administration, comes from our faculty, comes from those programs, and comes from the parents of those programs, because I was a band parent. You have a child in a band, that is synonymous to saying, "You're in the band," right, Mr. Sinto.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
So, I know that. It was a very enjoyable time, I will definitely say that. I did unfortunately be part of sitting in a school board meeting many, many years ago where we were doing a program out of our academic environment called the German Program. There were four students in that class. To make a class, eight is usually the first time we look for. Only four students. We had the middle school auditorium pact that night, listening, folks, why are we cutting this program? Did we give those other students an option? Absolutely. But it was the right thing to do at that time, again, given the data that we had presented, that was presented to us. So that's the important part.
Thank you, Russ. As a parent, we've been involved in athletics in our family. It's unfortunate, my children are not musically, artistically inclined, and some of them are athletically inclined either. This is a hard question, and I'll be honest. I've answered this question, and as a woman, where I struggle with this question. We've had to look at this, and it's a very simple answer, folks, you treat everyone equally, okay? You don't cut an athletic program, you don't cut a music program. You look at a way to do it that's equal to everybody. That means you look at first, what can you cut that doesn't affect students? Non-program cuts. We've done that, as a board member, it's hard. But you cut programs, you look at administration first, and can you make cuts there? Can people retire and fill them? Secondly, when we struggled with this, the answer was, and I was brought to me, "We're going to get rid of ninth grade sports. If we get rid of ninth grade sports, there will be no sports. If we touch the music program, we'll have an auditorium full of people." It's very simple, and that was easy. Why don't we look at cutting the pay to everybody in extracurriculars? Coaches, music people. That's what we did to save the money. We eventually put it back in, but nobody was cut out of the program, and that's the fair thing to do. Being a board member is hard. You have to make decisions that are not going to make everybody happy. We all want the community involved, folks, but there's a problem with that sometimes. Just because you have a group of people yelling at one thing, doesn't mean there's not people there also struggling for it. You've got to treat people fairly.
Well, as Dennis and Russ have noted, this is an issue we've dealt with a number of times. Any members of the pops in the audience? And you may remember, the discussion might predate some of your time when we looked at fourth block, and how do we change fourth block? And the concern there was that it would adversely affect the music program, which this district has pioneered itself on for years. Just to give you a sense where I'm coming from, my daughter studied opera performance in college, so she's a professional singer, so that was the way I was oriented. For me, the differentiator would be which activity is most directly supportive of the curriculum. In that case, I would probably tend to come down on arts, but not all the time. We had a very much difficult discussion some years ago about the elementary foreign language program, and should we keep that? And there was a lot of research saying we should, and yet, on the other side, as Susan can attest, we needed more time on task for the core subjects like English language. So this is the classic board trade-off. And when we get in these positions, as Dennis and Russ have noted, our obligation is to study the issue carefully, listen to everybody, and give you a reasoned and thoughtful answer whose primary decision-making criterion is education.
So I'm absolutely in agreement with what others have said. What I can add to the discussion, though, is you need to try to find creative solutions. I know that, again, that's easier said than done. I work at an arts integration school, and we don't have the budget for an athletics program. So what we had to do is try to find creative solutions where, and again, I work in an Asian-American school in Chinatown. We have Kung Fu, and we have a teaching artist who comes in and teaches that. That kind overlaps with athletics, so we're being creative there. We also have Dragon Dance, which is incredibly physically demanding. We also have something called Delphi Dance, where the Philadelphia Ballet sponsors our students. And again, this is a different context, but it is possible to try to find creative solutions where you can integrate the arts and athletics if you're in that scenario. Again, this would not be an easy discussion, would absolutely require community input, and hopefully we don't need to make that decision that time soon again.
I have to, excuse me, I have to agree, and Phil is right. I was in on more than one discussion on where can we cut, what can we do, how can we make this fair to everyone? And I will acknowledge board members at that point because they always tried to make it fair to everyone. I was a music parent as well as an athletic parent, and I didn't want anything cut. So to have to listen to the research, listen to the community, listen to everyone, and then make decisions is basically what we're telling you that we're going to be doing as a school board. Community, community, we need to hear you, we need to know how you're feeling, what's important. But in the end, I hope that everyone will always understand that the board always has the child's interest first. Education and the child comes before everything else. So, thank you.
Thank you all. Now we go back to Mr. Bellato to answer this question first, and this is particularly timely, given this weekend. What ideas do you have to improve the greening of our schools? How can the district make our schools and students more environmentally aware and proactive?
One of the things that, when we were building our elementary school over Manoa, one of the things that was brought up to us was the, do we want to make it what is called a green roof at the time, which was putting grass or garden on the roof? That, at that time, did not seem to be the correct roof. However, with the architect's insistence, we did put the ability to add solar panels to that school, particularly because of the location for late in the afternoon, because it does capture a lot of sunlight setting over the Glendale Road area. So that, and that school was built, and my dates all running together probably five, six years ago, but we already went one step ahead and went forward with that. So if we ever do at some point look at that again, and, you know, what is the biggest option for solar? You have to go and turn it back to the power companies and whatnot. There are a lot of other things that we had to look at, but at the time, it just wasn't feasible. But we do have that in mind all the time, whenever we build anything. Our high school expansion, look back 20 years ago, we looked at the possibility of using geothermal heating and cooling, but at the time, it wasn't feasible for us because we didn't really have the green space to drill the 40-foot hole, the 40-foot columns that we needed to extract that from here. So we are very apt at trying every possibility where we can go green, where we can do better with recycling to get that way.
When I was very young, one of the first things I did at Loomwich was, I had a wonderful teacher, Mrs. Addy, who used to take us around and collect newspapers, and put them in the container in the back to recycle them. Back in the 70s, nobody was recycling. She made an extracurricular activity that we all wanted to be involved in. What we should be doing now is making sure it's in our curriculum and across, not just in science, but if you're reading something at the elementary level in language arts, you might read something non-fictional about recycling and the benefits we'll have with regards to the world. In addition, as a board member, we have opportunities to help the environment, and you have to weigh those opportunities with the cost, quite frankly. It's easy to buy a cyber, not cyber, I apologize, a hybrid bus, but at $300,000 for a hybrid bus, when you can buy a diesel bus, at $70,000, there's not a cost savings there. What we've done is we've transferred it over to propane buses, which is really a much better way of doing it, and cost-effective. From when we built, as Mr. Bellato said, when we built our buildings, one of the things this district did that no one really gave us credit for, is we didn't tear down the middle school, folks. And when you don't tear something down, think of all that stone happened to be transferred someplace, and the carbon footprint of that. By redoing our middle school, we did a significant savings, not only to the residents, but also to the environment.
Well, Dennis touched on my first, which was curriculum, and I'll defer to my colleagues to the left, but that would certainly be a starting point. The other piece of that would be facilities, and that would be operation and construction. As Russ noted, when we built Manoa, we wanted to make it as green as we could within reason and cost. There are some constraints in the way the state provides funding for school buildings, what's called the Plankton Process, which we've actually, working through Great Vitality, have said, there needs to be more incentive for school districts to make their buildings as green as possible. Those incentives need to be expanded. They didn't allow us to do some of the things we wanted, and Russ is correct, we built that roof so that at some point later on, we could put solar on. Dennis talked about the propane buses. One thing with technology like that is, those of you in the technology field, you generally like to be the second person in, but not the first. So that's what we've tried to do, is make sure that it's tested first, if we can get grants, and then we'll be the second in. I believe that our science curricula uses the Havreford Reserve, they go up there, the woodlands and so forth has become an outdoor laboratory. And the middle school, we spent $64 million changing the middle school. I don't know if you're aware of the cost, and we made sure that you saw those windows so you knew that there was a lot of money that went inside. But that building was made much more energy efficient as a result of those improvements. We now air-condition schools because we're going to year-round schools in a lot of cases. So we do it where we can, it's a balance. Some of the incentives aren't as supportive, I guess, as I would like them to be, but we do pick our spots where we think we can, it makes sense.
So I'd actually like to start out with a quote from Kurt Vonnegut. He once said, "We could have saved the earth, but we were too damn..." He once said, "We could have saved the earth, but we were too damn cheap." So yeah, I mean, we do have budget constraints. So we can't just say we'll do everything, and money's not a factor. But it is important for it to be on the radar. I think tapping community resources is absolutely huge. We have the rain garden project here in town, which has been pretty prolific. Almost everywhere you go, you can see a rain garden. We have the C-Rack and the trails there, which are absolutely fabulous. But also, the community, we keep going back to community engagement. But I think when we say community engagement, we're assuming adults. I would love to know what the vision our children have for bringing our schools. I mean, this could be something that's integrated into science, math, bring in geography, knowing the zone that your planting is fit in, also art. But also, we need to build stewardship into the curriculum, into the school culture. I think something else, when we talk about the environment, it's so easy to say, oh, well, you know, there's an oil spill over there. Isn't that terrible? We need to make it close to home, in our community, grassroots, and looking at the changes that our kids can make. Because the truth of the matter is, we're not going to be able to go out realistically and clean up the oil spill. But there are things we can do here at home and things that we can do to change the way we live that are more environmentally conscious.
Our community is wonderful. When talking about the environment, our students get an opportunity, especially out at the crack, to go out there with our science curriculum and to use all of the paths and all of the inside to see. I'm sure everyone knows that the rain garden and the indigenous plants that are around there. Our kids actually work on that in fourth grade. One of the things that we do in the schools, besides recycle, recycling is a very big thing in our schools. The other thing we do is we plan a wonderful Earth Day. And we work hard towards things like that. In the high school, we have a wonderful science teacher who's creating, I think it's the Great Barrier Reef in Australia. It's not. But for anybody that gets to the high school, you should go up and see it. And teaching in biology, all of those things that are important to kids. We try. I think our teachers are very alert and very aware. And that's where I know our environment is getting helped, just by what our teachers are teaching to our children. Thank you.
I'd like to allude to something that was said earlier, I think, by Dennis. We need to make sure that we're fair. I don't think you can make a decision about what buses to buy or how to construct part of your facilities just by being green or also by saving the taxpayers some money. I don't think you can be fair to the teachers by just simply saying, oh, well, we're going to integrate some more additional programming or curriculum into an already busy, crazy day, without necessarily making sure that you provide them with the resources that are necessary. In terms of being, having this as a part of what happens during the school day, I think it's really true that this needs to come from within. I think the students really do have a voice in this. I think that the teachers, we have wonderful teachers and wonderful administrators in this district, they can bring this in. And are there enough, is there enough in place? Are there enough resources so that they feel supported, that they can do the necessary things inside the school day or as an extracurricular activity, that support the group? But I think we do need to make sure that we are fair and that we don't favor one side or the other. And that we're fair to everybody involved.
This one is from Mr. Gray. And this one is simply, what are your thoughts about an all-day kindergarten? I see many young parents here in our audience. And I'm sure that's a question they'd like to know now.
An all-day kindergarten would be a wonderful thing for our community. Unfortunately, it's probably not feasible for multiple reasons. We had an excellent presentation on this about a year ago. First and foremost, to be very simple about it, we don't have the classroom space for an all-day kindergarten. It would be doubling the kindergartens we currently have. We don't have that classroom space. We're stressed for space to begin with. From a cost standpoint, you have to look at what it would really cost, additional funds for education, that we might take other programs away. But most importantly, as a board member, we asked our superintendent, is this something you think we need? Because she is the academic leader of our community. And she felt that we would not add to the curriculum to that student. And that what we, if we gave her the money, if we said, the money's here. And the board's never turned a program down since I've been on the board. If we gave her the money, she told us, I would use it differently to help first through 12. But it's not a simple concept. We don't have the classroom space for it. We don't have the teachers. We'd have to add money to it. But that's not why I'm against it. I'm against, I'm not even against it. But the academic leaders that we've chosen believe that we can use the money in a better way.
We've looked at this question, I think, twice in the last 10 years. As Dennis noted, a year ago, March, we revisited the question again. And our primary criterion was educational. Yes, there are logistics and cost issues. We don't have the room, and the cost is too much. But that's not a satisfactory answer. The question is, would it make educational sense for us in this community to do that? The answer was, no. It's not clear that the investment, and I'm a benefit-cost guy, wouldn't be worth the educational return. All of us, I've read a lot of the papers, Kim read the papers, we all read the papers. The consensus of the academic papers on this kind of, on a full-day kindergarten was that it really has marginal to little benefit in a community like ours, where 55% of the parents have a bachelor's degree or higher as their highest degree. We have excellent preschool programs that we coordinate with every day. So we're making sure that they're teaching what they should have when they show up in kindergarten or first grade. The consensus of the literature was that it tended to benefit lower-income communities and minority students. And the concern was, how long did those benefits last? Have they disappeared by second grade, by third grade? So my point is, from an educational standpoint, we've looked at the question twice, and we've come to the conclusion both times that it did not make educational sense for us as a community.
So full-day kindergarten is a very tough issue. For me, as a relatively new parent, my daughter is 16 months old. I work full-time. I don't see kindergarten as a daycare, though, which some people throw back as, well, you support full-day kindergarten, then why don't you just take care of your own child yourself? And to back that up, the Pennsylvania kindergarten curriculum is written as a full-day curriculum. So when our students are attending half-day, they're getting essentially half of the curriculum. And there's research supporting both sides. There's research that supports the developmental benefits, the social benefits, the academic benefits to children of full-day kindergarten. I know the National Education Association, NEA, released a brief on that a couple of years back. But it sounds like if, and I've been in this discussion with different community members, it's a very polarizing issue. Some community members are very much for it. Other community members are very much against it. Just something I will add, though, is we see the benefits for children of low-income backgrounds, and those benefits dissipate after second and third grade. We should be asking ourselves, why are those benefits dissipating after second and third grade? And also, what are we doing as a district to support students who come from lower socioeconomic backgrounds, who aren't benefiting from a full-day kindergarten? That could potentially have positive effects for them. So again, it would, it sounds like it's a done deal. The discussion's off the table. But if there were enough community backing behind it, it sounds like it would be something the board would need to look at a third time.
Thanks, Kristin. It's a great question. And it's a question that, as a principal and as a mother, I've been asked many times. I, once again, I will say, support everything that's good for the whole child. Academically, educationally, as we've learned from the research, everybody kind of levels out in second or third grade. I worry more about playing. I worry more about resting. I worry more about growing developmentally and doing those things that we're ready to do. There are many children whose parents say to us in kindergarten, well, they can read. And perhaps they can. But perhaps they were reading a little bit quicker than others because they had that training in that school. But once they get to first and second grade, and they start to learn in the ways that we can teach them, everybody kind of reaches the level they were going to reach anyway. I personally, quite honestly, would rather see them out playing. And I think nursery schools do that. And I know in aftercares, the ones that we have that rent our spaces in our schools, they do play. That's what they're doing. They have areas where children can play, make pretend. They have costume areas. They have those fun kinds, fun kinds of art activities that we don't get to do in kindergarten because it's so academically based. So nursery schools are great places as well. And when a child is of an age and gets to first grade, it gets serious. I think you all know that. And I think six years old is time enough to get serious. Thank you.
I think it's really important, as has been said before, that the appropriate people in the administration, in this case, Dr. Ruscie, are, really have a lot of input as to whether or not this is a program for the district. I think it's important that the school board is not overreaching in how they approach particular situations, especially when it concerns academics in the community. I also feel, as was just said, that it's really important for children to be able to play. And it does, you know, we were talking about PSSA testing and how the students are sitting in third grade, taking tests for weeks. The same thing for five-year-olds. A long day is a long day. And I know that it's a very polarizing issue, as has been said. But all of those things together, the facilities, the budget, the input from the administrative leaders, those things, if they lead towards one direction or another, are what should drive this decision.
Full-day kindergarten option, it would be, it would be very good asset for this district. However, as has been mentioned, the cost factors are pretty steep right now. We all know that all of our buildings in the morning, we have, we built special walls in our schools, right? They stretch, and then they condense at the end of the day. That's where we are with some of our buildings. Construction would be a huge expense. Stamping, huge expense that needs to be analyzed. But not just salary. You've got benefits. You have Caesar's pensions to be concerned with. It is a very, very polarizing position. Where do we go with it? We looked at it, as Mr. Hopkins noted, we looked at it about 10 years ago. We looked at it now. My guess is, in the next five, seven years, we'll be hearing it again. The research is exhausting. Dr. Ruscie did provide us with volumes of information. Phil might be, calls himself the spreadsheet guy. Everybody on the board knows that if something's given to us to be read, guess who reads it from start to finish? It's the kind of commitment that we have to put. And believe me, all nine of us right now, put that commitment out there all the time.
All right, this is our last question. This one goes to Mr. Hopkins first, right? And the question is, most, if not all, of other districts make their policies available and searchable online. We do not. Do you see this as a problem? And if so, what will you do about it?
Well, this discussion, this discussion came up as part of the, really quite wonderful board meetings we had related to the transsexual issue. And as a board member, it was great to see so many people out there who were wonderful and eloquent and dedicated to that issue. Sure, we need to have the policy manual online in a more searchable form. I know we're talking about doing that. Now, recognized, and I didn't bring a copy, our policy manual is like the thickness of this model. So it's a big document. It consists of policies that we've drawn up, the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, state law, and so forth. Do I agree that it should be out there? Absolutely. However, if you want a copy, you can certainly go to the administrative offices, get a copy, you can let us know, we'll send you a very big PDF. But absolutely. One of the things I think that we've been very good about is transparency. This is probably an issue where we lag a little bit. But we're happy to share policies with anybody, anytime, anywhere.
So with school board being a publicly elected body and publicly funded, in terms of the school district, the fact that the policies aren't searchable online seems a little odd and a little off. Yes, the policies are available. If you have the Oakmont School, or you can request a copy in paper or a digital copy sent to you. But it should be searchable, it should be online. And I think that would just be, that would add to the transparency or the vision of transparency that the school board has. Like I said, with the digital technologies that we have, there's really no reason why that can't be, these documents can't be public.
Of course, the documents should be online. And of course, they are public. I, as a principal, had a file this big of all of policies in my office, and I was happy to share it with anyone who asked. Just for information's sake, in my 12 years, no one asked. But I absolutely agree with you that it should be online and it should be searchable. Thank you.
Yes, I think it should be online and it should be searchable. Everything that everyone has said so far. Whether or not that process is a long one or a short one, I'm not actually sure. But I'm sure that it could be done. So yes, I think it should be searchable and online.
Being a technology person, of course, I would say absolutely it should be online. We're working towards that. As part of the IU Board, we just contracted that process to begin. Our policy book sits this high. I do have one under my bed. Anybody wants it, call me. 20 years ago, when I first started writing for the school board, the first thing I thought, wow, we've got to find out what the policies are in the school district. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure if the library representative is still here. But they had a copy of the policy manual. And believe it or not, yes, I'm married, I'm a keeper, whatever you want. I spent a couple of weekends here reading that policy manual for my own purposes. But it'd been great if it was searchable online back in 1995. That was really wishful thinking today. But we're working towards it. And again, it's not that easy task. Because you've got to make sure they are 100% accurate for what they are.
Of course, they should be online. And it's disturbing to me they're not online. I've been assured, because I've asked this question multiple times, I've been assured they will be online in June this year. About a year ago, a parent had a discipline problem and called me. And I said, we have a policy on that. And they told me they couldn't find the policy online. And I was surprised. I immediately sent over the policy that they were questioning. And it is available, I don't want, but that's unacceptable. I've asked, since that first phone call repeatedly, why are the policies online? And I've now been told about a month and a half ago, as of June of this year, they will be online. And I will make sure that they will happen, okay? Our policies are extensive, as in all school district policies. I think people need to realize that we take it very, very seriously. And so when someone asks, can you change a policy? There's actually a policy on changing a policy. And that policy is that we read it twice in public, and we then vote on it at the third meeting. So there are three separate public meetings. So the public has an input on all policies. One of the things we did many years ago, when I first became president, was we changed the board meetings so that we weren't voting on things the same day we were discussing them in public. It's not fair to the community. It's not transparent. We've been transparent on everything, the budget, anything you ask. However, we could do a better job with the policies, and we're going to do it.
Thank you. As the League of Women Voters' moderator, I commend you for your transparency and your efforts to make these policies public. And now for your final wrap-up summary. And I'm going to begin at the opposite end of the table. And you have one minute to give us a final summary overview statement. Thank you, Mr. Sento.
Once again, I would just like to thank everyone here. It's really nice as a parent to see how many people from the community have come out to support this discussion. And to thank everybody up here, it's been great to speak about our views on education and to see some things talked about that maybe otherwise would not have been in this setting. So again, I comment this as an educator and a parent and someone who wants to be involved in the decision-making process and that has a new voice to bring to the school board as both an educator, a parent, and musician. And I welcome the opportunity to serve the community. Thank you.
Thanks. Now, I owe you an apology. I spoke so much about myself in the opening. I did not tell you my vision. And my vision as a member of the school board is to remember the role that our schools have in not only educating our children, but instilling in them a sense of pride and responsibility to this wonderful community. I believe one way to support my vision is to help redefine student success beyond mere performance on standardized tests. So that our public schools are known to be a place that maximizes every single student's potential. I hope to work with all stakeholders to help produce productive, responsible, educated citizens of our community and the world. And I will rely on my extensive and well-rounded experience to make thoughtfully considered decisions that will empower our students. I want them to be scholars. I want them to be athletes, musicians, artists, and science. But mostly, I want them to be who they are. Thank you.
I'd like to close with a quote from the children's rights activist. I'd like to close with a quote from the children's rights activist, Marion Wright Gailman. She once said, "Education is for improving the lives of others and for leaving your community and world better than you found it." So with this noble vision for education in mind, if elected to our school board, I will advocate for strong, community-based public schools that embrace whole-child approaches and see our children as more than just test scores. I will support rich educational and extracurricular opportunities that prepare our students to become active participants in our diverse multicultural society. And I will work to foster greater dialogue between our community, schools, and the school board. If my vision resonates with you, I encourage you to vote for me on May 16. Thank you.
I, too, am going to share a quote with you because it's said much better than I the role of the school board. This is Edie Hirsch. "Bringing our children closer to universal competence is important, but an equally important contribution of the truly common school would be the strengthening of universal communicability and sense of community within the public sphere. In the long run, that could be the common school's most important contribution to preserving the fragile fabric of our democracy." Now, as somebody who served in the United Army Unit for 20 years, what we have in Havreford is in fact unique county-wide and even statewide. We've kept politics out of school board for 20 years. I was a founding member of Citizens for Quality of Education. Those of us who get around the state see that it's very different here. And an IU meaning, I can count around the room to know who's going to vote for a particular issue based on their party affiliation. We don't have that here. We need to keep that tradition going. And I'm going to close on what I said at the beginning. We deliver great economic value at a modest cost, and that's what I wish to maintain.
Thank you, Phil. My parents had a lot of, I think my parents had a lot of good things for me growing up. They did two things that I really appreciate. One, they moved to Havreford, and two, they put me in public schools. That gave me a true appreciation of public education. I've supported it ever since I first walked in the doors. I believe, and I'll agree with Phil, we have something very unique on our parent's school board. We've had it unique for a very long time. We keep politics out of it. We make decisions that are best for kids. We always have looked at every decision as what's best for the student. We have done that and will continue to do that. I've been involved for a very long time. I bring fiscal management. I bring legal skills to it. I bring parental skills. I've been a board member for 21 years. I'm beginning to truly understand curriculum, what's best for kids. But what you really need to do, more than anything, is to make sure that you have a whole child, be kid-focused, provide that we're doing just more than testing the scores. I would never, ever view a student as being a test score, and no board member that I've ever worked with has ever done that. And I will make sure that we never have that in the future.
Thank you, Dennis. Again, I'd like to thank, of course, HKN, the League of Women Voters, my fellow College Ed candidates, for taking this time this afternoon. It's a really pretty, nice weather day here in the library. It takes a village. And of that village, I would like to continue as an elected school board member to the community of Havreford County. And as Mr. Hopkins has said, at the IU, it is really great to interact with other boards and listen to their complaints and not just say, "We don't have that problem." So we maintain that apolitical approach. That apolitical approach brought us 42 candidates for our superintendency position. The 12 finalists all said in their openings to us. One of the reasons why I'm here is because the way this board works, the way this board functions, it's not single agenda items. You all work together, and that's coming from strangers to the district. And we didn't just get local. We got people that were stretched out across the state, nothing national. So that is my mission, to keep that moving with the board and with the fellow colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time. I would now like to turn my role over as moderator to Kate D'Arriel, who is the president, co-president, a facilitator of the Havreford League of Women Voters for our closing.
Thank you very much. A special thank you to HKN and to the League of Women Voters for helping to put this together. And a big thank you to our six exceptional school board candidates and to our moderator, Roberta Winters. We really appreciate everything you did. Thank you for your attention and your thoughtful questions. Don't forget to vote in the primary on May 16th. The polls open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m., and you can vote for four school board candidates, unfortunately not all six. And I hope that you'll vote for some of the other judges and, right, 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 judges and other people running. We have absentee ballots out there, and the deadline for sending in your absentee ballot is the 9th of May. Thank you very much.